Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the September 12th, 2022 meeting of the Menlo Park Planning Commission. We are glad you've decided to be with us this evening. Established by state law, our planning commission is composed of seven volunteer voting age residents of Menlo Park, appointed to four-year terms by the city council. Our planning commission is not a policy-setting body, that's the city council, we are a policy implementing body. And in so doing, we review development proposals on public and private lands for compliance with our city's general plan and zoning ordinance. These can be found on the city website. Commission reviews all development proposals requiring a use permit, architectural control variance, minor subdivision, and environmental review associated with these projects. The commission is the final decision-making body for these applications unless appealed to the city council. The commission also serves as a recommending body to the city council for major subdivisions, rezonings, conditional development permits, zoning ordinance amendments, general plan amendments, and the environmental reviews, and below-market rate housing agreements associated with those projects. We work in close partnership, we greatly rely on the staff of our city's planning division, which was responsible for coordinating the enforcement of the city zoning ordinance and related policies concerning applications for residential, commercial, and industrial development projects. If this is your first time joining a planning commission meeting this evening, we are very glad, especially glad that you are here, and we encourage your active participation, whether you're an applicant or an interested member of the public. And for that, I'm going to turn to associate planner Chris Turner to explain exactly how members of the public can participate during associated public comment periods this evening. Mr. Turner, welcome and thank you for guiding us.
Thank you, Chair DeCarty. Regarding the procedures for communicating, commissioners will have their webcams on for the duration of the meeting. For those presenting on an item on tonight's agenda, we ask that you also turn on your microphone and webcam during the presentation of your item. A member of staff will assign you keyboard and mouse controls if you are displaying a presentation. We then kindly ask that you turn off your webcam and microphone when the when done with the presentation portion of your item unless called upon by the chair. During the public comment period, members of the public will have an opportunity to share their comments or questions by clicking the raise hand icon on your screen, upon which staff will introduce introduce you and activate your microphone. If you're calling into tonight's meeting, please click star nine on your keypad and that will notify staff that you have a comment. If multiple people are speaking from the same account tonight, please let us know at the beginning of your time and we will make sure that each person gets a chance to speak. And with that, I will hand it back to you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Turner. Appreciate your help as always. So let's begin this evening, and as we do each time we meet, we'll begin with roll call. I'll ask each commissioner to unmute themselves and verbally respond. And we will begin, hopefully in alphabetical order, with Commissioner Barnes.
Present.
Commissioner Doe.
Present.
Vice Chair Harris. We believe is not present and might be joining later. Commissioner Riggs.
Present, good evening.
Commissioner Tate.
Present.
Commissioner Thomas has also let us know that he will be joining later this evening. My name's Chris DeCarty, my pronouns are he/him, and I'm the Chair of the Planning Commission. With that, we've got five members present in a quorum. And so now let me turn to Acting Principal Planner for our city, Corinna Sandmeyer, for reports and announcements.
Good evening, Chair DeCarty and Commissioners. I don't have any updates, but I'm happy to answer questions.
Any questions at this time? From Commissioners? All right. Seeing none, let's go ahead and move to item D on our agenda, which is public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the commission on any subject not listed on the agenda, as we will be turning to those later, and items under the consent calendar. Each speaker may address the commission once under public comment for a limited three minutes. Please clearly state your name and address or political jurisdiction in which you live. Commission cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore the commission cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment other than to provide general information. So, Mr. Turner, let's see if we have public comment under item D this evening. You may be on mute, Mr. Turner.
Thought I clicked it. Sorry. Thanks. Once again, if you would like to give public comment, please click the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen, or if you're calling into tonight's meeting, let's click star nine. I don't see any at the moment.
All right, any at this point?
None at this time.
All right, then we will go ahead and close item D, public comment. Item E is our consent calendar. We have no items on the consent calendar this evening, but I will recognize Commissioner Riggs who has raised his hand.
Thank you. I just have a question for staff. I'm aware that we have been well behind in providing meeting minutes for planning commissioner review. And I just wondered why we did not take the opportunity to at least keep up with a couple of minutes on this evening's calendar.
So, we're aware of the need to catch up. The recording secretary is currently on vacation, so we didn't have any items to bring tonight, but we are working to catch up on those, so they're current again.
And there's no other person who works on these other than the reporting secretary?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right. With that, I'm going to move then to item F, which is public hearing. We have two items this evening. We'll begin with item F1. I want to recognize for everybody that we received an amended agenda. And to make sure that everybody is working with that, it only applies to item F2 where there's an updated staff report. But wanted to flag that as we move to items F for this evening. Item F1, on the amended agenda, as I am reading the introduction here, is to adopt a resolution to approve architectural control, use permit, and variance for exterior and interior modifications to an existing commercial building at 135 El Camino Real in the SP ECRD, that's the El Camino Real Downtown Specific Plan Zoning District. Modifications include a new front facade, a small second-story addition, roof deck modifications to landscaping. The request also includes a change of use from a restricted personal service to mixed-use office and residential building with one residential unit on property that is substandard with regard to parking and a variance to reduce the required front set back by 3.5 feet. And I am now blanking on whether I'm turning to Mr. Turner or Ms. Khan. I apologize. Ms. Khan, welcome.
Good evening, Commissioners. There is no update to the staff report. We do have the applicant team as well as the property owner, David, on call tonight, so if you have any questions for staff or for the applicant team and owner, we are here to answer those questions. And I believe there is a presentation from the applicant, Ross Levy.
Great, thank you, Ms. Khan. Any questions of staff before we turn to the applicant for the presentation? All right, welcome, Mr. Levy. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Appreciate your time and your consideration tonight. This is a small project with a fascinating backstory, probably unlike any request you've ever received in the past. This is a rendering of our proposal. We think a an improvement to the exterior appearance of the building as it exists today. I will show you an image of that in a moment. The very brief backstory on this particular project. Sorry, I'm not having control of the screen, Van. Hello, Van. There we go. So this project has been an incremental process that was the result of a first theft. All any fixture or appliance that wasn't nailed down in this building was stolen at one point in the in the summer of 2020. Subsequent to that, the building was occupied and swatted in, and there was extensive flooding and sewer damage. So there was extensive damage to not only the fixtures and finishes of the building, but ultimately to the structure and substructure. This required building permits in order to repair because the building was a commercial building. Following the application for the building permits, the plan check comments that we received included required upgrades for Americans with Disabilities Act and for life safety in terms of seismicity and other improvements. As we pursued the the reconstruction of the building, you know, vis a vis these code requirements, we found that we had to alter the entryway. Altering the entryway of the building meant that we were altering its appearance on the El Camino Real, which required architectural control review, which brings us to you here this evening. And not only as we pursued that, we were, see, my presentation disappeared, now it's back. Following that, we were made aware of the 50% transparency requirement for structures that are facing El Camino Real, so this caused us to need to renovate the facade of the building in its entirety. Renovating the facade of the building triggered questions about the front setback, which, given the small footprint of the building, inclined us to ask for a variance, which was something that the 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 planning staff and the Chair has made reference to. And finally, and most recently, we received a condition of approval that is requiring a 10-foot-wide sidewalk, and that's something we would ask you to consider as you review this project. We did create setback that will provide for nearly 10-foot-wide sidewalk in some locations and somewhat less than 10-foot sidewalk. I'm still having trouble controlling the screen here, so apologies for that. Somewhat less than 10-foot because the building face is not parallel to the property line here. On your screen, you're seeing the sort of list of chronological list of code requirements and other requirements that were asked of us as we proceeded. Again, trying to scroll, starting without much success. There we go. And finally, it brings us to the hearing that we're having with you here today. We are asking you to contemplate the condition for the 10-foot sidewalk in the interest of nominal green space. We do understand that a raised planter may not be allowable, but we're asking to consider an eight-foot-wide sidewalk with two feet of planting space. This would be consistent with the green scape that is common in the district. It would soften the front facade of the building, and it would also be consistent with a raised planter that is in existence at 145 El Camino immediately to the north of this property. This is an image of the building as it exists. You can see it's a kind of a, it's a 40s vintage structure, I believe, in in not good repair and not necessarily in keeping with the aspirations of the special use district on El Camino Real. We have done historical arborist traffic study and environmental health studies to date. I understand there may be some additional studies as conditions of approval. And finally, once again, some images of the building as we proposed it. So once again, this is a modest proposal. It restored, or it creates a new facade and something that's more contemporary. It creates a roof deck for additional outdoor space. It reconfigures indoor space in compliance with the building code so that bedrooms have proper egress. And it does all this within the confines of the existing building shell, while at the same time trying to address the needs of the the special use district. Thank you for your time. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Great, thank you, Mr. Levy. Any questions for the applicant, for Mr. Levy, or for staff before we open public comment? All right, seeing none, Mr. Turner, why don't we go ahead and open public comment for item F1?
All ready. At this time, if you would like to give public comment on this item, please click the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen, or if you're calling into tonight's meeting, please click star nine. At the moment, I do not see anybody.
Let's go ahead and just give it a moment.
Still no hands raised at this time.
All right. Let's go ahead and close public comment on item F1. Let's bring it back to the virtual dais for commissioners for questions, comments, and ultimately a motion. Who would like to begin? Commissioner Riggs.
Thank you, and good evening, Mr. Levy. First, I can't help but offer my condolences. The route that you have had to take here reminds me of a Charles Dickens novel and the existence of the Office of Circumlocution. I guess that is what happens when when a series of triggers are unfortunately, well, triggered. So I really only have one question. Because I have to say that your response to the situation is much appreciated. On your rendering, you do not indicate any coping at the top of your, at your parapets, of which there are three layers. And this is certainly possible to do, putting a waterproofing layer underneath the stucco. But I'm just inclined to ask if, in fact, you will have a metal coping at each parapet, because that does change the look of a project. Through the chair, if I could ask the applicant.
Yes, of course.
Thank you, Commissioner Riggs. Yeah, it is our intention to create a contemporary and crisp appearance, so it is our intention to waterproof below the stucco layer, have our flashings concealed, and create this kind of contemporary and refined appearance.
All right, cool. I must say, I'm a fan of that. Thank you. No more questions.
Other Commissioners' comments or questions? I have a clarifying question. This could be for you, Mr. Levy, or maybe for staff. In our packet, it's on page 41 in the packet, or attachment E is your original letter, dated July 18th and revised August 25th. And thank you for for going over the history. And I will concur with Commissioner Riggs's sentiment. In your third paragraph, you said the building was an office previously occupied by a psychic offering services in that capacity. This is considered a blighted use and is to be rectified as a portion of this application. Blighted use was in quotes. I wondered if if this is either to you or to staff, is is this in some way officially a blighted use or unofficially a blighted use? I wasn't familiar with this.
I can't speak to the official nature of that term, and perhaps staff can. It's a term that was used in some conversations about this building and but never appeared in the proper paperwork, I don't think. Perhaps Fatim Khan can answer that.
Great, thanks, Ms. Khan.
Yes, according to the specific plan, it's not an official blighted use. However, if the applicant wanted to retain the use, that would have been possible.
And retain the use for the psychic services or for? Okay. So there's nothing official about this, and a psychic could, in fact, be housed in that building still going forward.
It was an existing use which was allowed at the time. So this existing use would have been allowed to continue. However, if a new proposal came in, we would have to verify based on the zoning where it wants to be located, whether it's a feasible use or not.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Other Commissioners, questions or comments or a motion? Commissioner Barnes.
I will make a motion to approve. I think the proposed project is an upgrade to the current status of the building that is there. So for that reason, and without discouraging any other Commissioner comment, I will make a motion to approve for the staff report.
All right, a motion to approve from Commissioner Barnes. Questions, comments? A second, another motion? Commissioner Riggs?
I'm happy to second.
All right, Commissioner Riggs is seconded. Any Commissioner which to speak before we move to a vote? I guess it's a question. I see a hand raised. It's not a Commissioner's hand. Okay. So let's go ahead and move to a vote on this item, first from Commissioner Barnes, the second Commissioner Riggs to approve for the submitted staff report for the Commissioners present. I'll go in alphabetical order. Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Doe?
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Tate?
Yes.
I will vote yes as well. It passes five to zero with our two Commissioners absent. Thank you very much. Best of luck with the project and have a great evening. And with that, I will close item F1. And we will move on to item F2. Item F2, is to adopt resolutions to certify the final environmental impact report and approve a use permit and architectural control, develop a five-story research and development R&amp;D building with up to 260,400 square feet of gross floor area as part of the 1350 Adams Court project in the LSV, that would be the Life Sciences Bonus Zoning District. Project site consists of an existing two-story, approximately 188,100 square foot life sciences built, address 1305 O'Brien Drive, and an undeveloped northern portion of the site anticipated to be addressed, 1350 Adams Court. The proposed R&amp;D building would be located on the vacant site area and the existing building would remain. Parking for the proposed new
I don't get that. They didn't even address. We don't want this.
I'm sorry, I heard another voice. Should I stop? I guess I'll ask staff. Should I stop or continue?
Please continue.
Thank you. The proposed R&amp;D building would be located on the vacant site area and the existing building would remain. Parking for the proposed new R&amp;D building would be located in a partially below-grade podium level with three additional levels of parking provided above grade and integrated into the building. The total gross floor area at the project site with the proposed and existing buildings would be approximately 448,500 square feet with a total proposed floor area ratio of approximately 92% for the site. The proposal includes a request for an increase in height and FAR under the bonus level development allowance in exchange for community amenities. The applicant is proposing payment of the community amenities in Luffy. Project also includes upgrades of water lines beneath Adam Court along the interior of the project site and beneath O'Brien Drive from the southwest corner of the project site frontage to the intersection with Willow Road. Project also includes a request to use and store hazardous materials to allow a diesel generator to operate the facilities in the event of a power outage emergency. The final environmental impact report pursuant to sequel was released on September 1st, 2022. The final EIR for the proposed project does not identify any significant and unavoidable environmental impacts that would result from the implementation of the proposed project. The final EIR identifies potentially significant environmental impacts that can be mitigated to a less-than-significant LTSM in the following categories: air quality, greenhouse gas emissions, noise, and transportation. The final EIR identifies less-than-significant environmental impacts in the following categories: population, housing, utilities, and energy. The city previously prepared an initial study for the proposed project that determined the following topic areas would have no impacts: less-than-significant impacts or less-than-significant impacts with mitigation measures, including applicable mitigation measures from the Connect Memo EIR. These are aesthetics, agriculture, and forestry resources, biological resources, cultural resources, energy, geology, and soils, hazards, hazards, and hazardous materials, hydrology, and water quality, land use, and planning, mineral resources, public services, recreation, tribal cultural resources, and wildfire. The draft EIR was circulated for a 45-day public review from April 2nd, 2022 through May 19th, 2022, and the Planning Commission held a public hearing on the draft EIR at its meeting on May 2nd, 2022. The final EIR includes responses to all substantive comments received on the draft EIR. The project location does not contain a toxic site pursuant to Section 6596.2 of the Government Code. And with that, let me turn it over to Mr. Turner.
Thank you, Chair DeCarty and Commissioners for that introduction. I will ask on to pull up the presentation. I'm going to give a brief presentation and turn it over to our secret consultants at ICF, and then we'll hear from the project applicants. So if we can get this going. Great. Okay, so, thank you again. We are here to discuss the 1350 Adams Court project. And this will be the here, public hearing for the final EIR certification and entitlements. Again, I'll start with a quick overview of the project and hand it off to ICF, and then we'll hear from Tarleton. 1350 Adams Court is located in the Bayfront area east of Willow Road. The project site is an approximately 11.2-acre site highlighted here in red. And it's located in the Life Science Bonus Zoning District. The property is partially developed with a building located at 1305 O'Brien Drive, which is remain, proposed to remain. And the remaining portion of the property is currently vacant. There's a blue dashed line on the western border of of this map where the zoning map is identified of Paseo. All right, the project would develop the vacant portion of the site with a new life science research and development building up to 260,400 square feet of gross floor area. The proposed design is actually about 255,602 square feet, along with other site improvements, including a partially subterranean parking structure and public and private. including a partially subterranean parking structure and public and private open space. The project is proposed at the bonus level, which allows for increased height and floor area in return for community amenities. The applicant is proposing to pay an in-lu fee approximately $16,115,000. Finally, the project does not include construction of the Paseo at this time since Meta is currently proposing to construct the full 20-foot wide Paseo as part of their Willow Village project. However, the applicant would construct their 10-foot wide portion of the Paseo if if Meta does not construct the Paseo for any reason. So the recommended format for the remainder of the meeting while staff introduction of the project right now, presentation of the by the EIR consultant, then we'll have a presentation by the applicants, then public comment, open it up for commissioner questions and then commissioner deliberation and vote. The recommended actions on this item are to adopt a resolution certifying the final environmental impact report, otherwise known as the FEIR, adopting the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, the MMRP, adopting the secret findings, and to adopt a resolution approving the use permit and architectural control. The actions above are subject to conditions of approval, which is located in attachment B, exhibit E. Finally, we have a few proposed clarifications to conditions of approval that came about after publication of the staff report. Staff has reviewed the edits and agrees with the changes and recommends the following revisions. Bear with me. They're a little bit lengthy. So first, staff recommends that condition 2R be removed from the condition of approval. It was an accidental holdover from another project and not applicable to this project. Staff recommends that staff recommends that condition 2T read as follows. No later than upon the middle of a complete building permit application and prior to issuance of the foundation building permit, the applicant shall submit a plat and legal description and proposed form of agreement to for public utilization of the publicly accessible open space to the satisfaction of the Public Works Director and City Attorney. The form of agreement shall ensure to the satisfaction of the city that the applicant has reasonable control over the publicly accessible open space and that the publicly accessible open space is accessible to the general public for the life of the project during reachable hours of each day of the week, which may be determined by the applicant, provided that the publicly accessible open space shall be open to the public at least between sunrise and 30 minutes past sunset. Staff recommends that condition 2Z read as follows. The applicant shall submit complete plans for construction of improvements to the city prior to issuance of the building permit. The applicant shall construct all improvements prior to occupancy subject to relief for diligent pursuit is noted below upon obtaining final approval from the city in Caltrans. Staff recommends that condition 2AA read as follows. In order to overcome shortfalls in level of service created by the project, the applicant shall perform, construct, and complete at the applicant's own expense with provision for credit and or reimbursement as noted below, certain transportation improvements prior to issuance of certificate of occupancy for the project subject to relief for diligent pursuit as noted below. The applicant shall submit documented costs, including design, engineering, and permitting costs to the Director of Public Works or designate of said transportation improvements, and the applicant shall be entitled to credit for said for said transportation improvements pursuant to Menlo Park Municipal Code 13.26.80 or reimbursement should the final expenses for improvements included in the TIF program exceed the project TIF payment. If the final expenses to the applicant for the required intersection improvements included in the city's TIF program exceed the project's TIF payment, the city and the applicant shall enter into reimbursement agreement, which will provide for the applicant to be reimbursed by the city from available TIF revenues. Staff recommends that condition 2BB1 read as follows. Under the near-term scenario, the proposed intersection improvement at the intersection of University Avenue and Adams Drive is to install a traffic signal. This improvement is included in the city's TIF program located within the city of East Palo Alto. Simultaneous with the submission of a complete building permit application, the applicant shall submit complete plans to the city of East Palo Alto or Caltrans for this improvement. Complete plans shall include all necessary requirements to construct the improvements, including but not limited to striping modifications and a detailed cost estimate. The plans are subject to review by the city. Upon obtaining approval from the Director of Public Works or Designee, the applicant shall construct the improvements prior to the granting of occupancy. If East Palo Alto and/or Caltrans approval has not been obtained or intersection improvements have not been completely completed prior to occupancy of the building, but the applicant demonstrates that it has worked diligently to pursue agency approvals and completion of construction on the to the satisfaction of the Director of Public Works or Designee, the city shall grant occupancy and the applicant shall continue to pursue approval in construction for a period of five years from the date of issuance of the first building permit. If the applicant continues to work diligently to the satisfaction of the Director of Public Works Designee, but has not yet obtained approval or been able to construct the improvement, then the applicant shall be relieved of responsibility to construct the improvement. Believe this is the last one. So finally, staff recommends condition 2BB2 read as follows. Under the near-term scenario, the proposed intersection improvement at the intersection of Willow Road and Newbridge Street is to modify a signal timing to protected left turn phasing operation on Newbridge Street. Provide a leading left turn phase on southbound Newbridge Street and a lagging left turn phase on northbound Newbridge Street and optimize the signal timing. This improvement was studied and is included in the city's TIF program. The proposed improvement would require Caltrans and/or City of East Palo Alto approval. Signal and other electrical utilities and equipment will also require modification. Note, this improvement has been initiated. The applicant shall consult with the city for direction prior to proceeding to the next step. Simultaneous with the submission of a complete building permit application, the applicant shall submit complete plans for this improvement. Improvement, complete plan shall include all necessary requirements to construct the improvements, including but not limited to grading and drainage improvements, utility relocations, tree protection requirements, striping modifications, and a detailed cost estimate. The plans are subject to review by the city. Upon obtaining approval from the Director of Public Works or Designee, the applicant shall construct the improvements prior to the occupancy of the building. If East Palo Alto and/or Caltrans approval has not been obtained or intersection improvements have not been completed prior to occupancy of the building, but the applicant demonstrates that it has worked diligently to pursue agency approvals and completion of the construction to the satisfaction of the Director of Public Works or Designee, the city shall grant occupancy and the applicant shall continue to pursue approval and construction for a period of five years from the date of issuance of the first building permit. If the applicant continues to work diligently to the satisfaction of the Director of Public Works or Designee, but has not yet obtained approval or been able to construct the improvement, then the applicant shall be relieved of responsibility to construct the improvement. Thank you for hanging with me on that. Some administrative details to read into the record. I will hand it off to Heidi Mickelson and ICF unless there are any initial questions.
Yeah, let me pause for just a second, Mr. Turner, on that for any initial questions. Does anybody, any commissioners have questions on Mr. Turner on his presentation or about the fact of the revisions or any questions about the revisions at this time while they are fresh on our minds? I guess I just, I'd have a big picture question, Mr. Turner. This might be from a Sandmeyer. So that I completely understand the need to do these sometimes and we're trying to do our best to move projects through. Is there a threshold at which if we made significant revisions on a previously submitted report at the time of the meeting, we would consider continuing the item to a future Planning Commission meeting so that members of the public and everybody could have time to review those revisions? How is that determination made? This may not be for you. It may be for Ms. Sandmeyer.
I may defer to
Yeah, I think in some cases, if there's significant changes, we would continue the project or recommend that the Planning Commission continue the project. I think in this case, the a lot of it was just wording clarification, so it doesn't, I don't think it changes the intent of the conditions. But of course, it is up to the Planning Commission if it wishes to continue the project.
Terrific. Thank you for the clarification. I appreciate it. Any other questions from commissioners before we move on? All right, Ms. Mickelson, thank you for letting me interrupt there briefly, and we're looking forward to your presentation. The floor is yours.
Great. Thank you, Chair DeCarty. I'll have to have someone remind me okay how to advance the slides. Do I just go ahead? Okay, I see. I have control. And let me just make sure I can do my dual monitors here and review my notes while I do this. Okay. All right. I, I think, I think I've got it. Thanks for bearing with me there. All right. Good evening, Chair DeCarty, commissioners and members of the public. Thank you for joining us tonight to discuss the 1350 Adams Court project environmental impact report. My name's Heidi Mickelson. I am a managing director with ICF and I served as the project director for this project. Also here with me tonight is Devon Adiberry, the project manager for the project, and Devon and I will be available to answer any questions that you may have at the end of the presentation during the question and answer session. And we also have with us Ling Jin from Hexagon, the transportation consultant for the project. Our presentation tonight will describe the environmental review process under SEQA, including next steps, an overview of the draft EIR, and a summary of the final EIR and the comments that were received on the draft EIR and the responses to those comments that are contained in the final EIR. So since you're already familiar with the draft EIR from the draft EIR comment hearing, the primary intent of tonight's meeting is really to summarize the conclusions in the final EIR. And as part of my presentation, I'll provide a summary of the proposed project, a really quick summary of the proposed project, as well as an overview of the SEQA process, including next steps. So as Chris mentioned, the project is the construction. I'm sorry about that, guys. I'm juggling dual monitors here. The project is the construction of a life sciences building that's approximately 255,000 square feet in size. 1305 O'Brien would remain. The maximum height of the building would be 92 feet with 706 parking spaces, approximately 650 employees, and private as well as public open space. This slide provides an overview of the environmental review process, including where we are today, which is the final stage in the SEQA process. The next steps for the project include, as Chris mentioned, certification of the EIR by the Planning Commission and approval of the requested permits, which are the actions for you tonight. Also, if the project is approved, a notice of determination is filed with the county clerk and the California State Clearing House, which begins the statute of limitations period under SEQA. So as we discussed during the draft EIR public hearing back in May, the draft EIR is a tool for identifying the project's physical impacts to the environment. The EIR is used to inform the public and the decision makers about the project prior to project approval, recommend ways to reduce impacts, and consider alternatives and mitigation measures to lessen the identified significant effects. The draft EIR for this project was released this year on April 4th for a 45-day review period that ended on May 23rd. So I won't go into too much detail on the impacts and the mitigation measures that we identified in the draft EIR since we did discuss those at length during the draft EIR hearing. But as a quick refresher, the draft EIR found that impacts with respect to transportation, air quality, greenhouse gas emissions, and noise would be potentially significant but can be mitigated to a less than significant level with implementation of the mitigation measures that were recommended in the EIR. Impacts related to population and housing and utilities and energy were determined to be less than significant and no mitigation measures were required. Ultimately, the draft EIR found the proposed project would not result in any significant and unavoidable impacts. That is, all the potentially significant impacts would be less than significant or would be reduced to less than significant levels with implementation of project-specific mitigation measures or Connect Menlo mitigation measures since Connect Menlo was used to streamline the analysis in the CIR. The final EIR, which was released on September 1st, 2022, responds to written and oral comments on the draft EIR that were raised during the 45-day public review period. Comments were received from three agencies, including Caltrans, the Menlo Park Fire Protection District, and the West Bay Sanitary District. And as you're well aware, comments were also received from the commission, the Planning Commission, during the draft EIR comment hearing. The final EIR document responds to each individual comment, which is identified by a discrete number. Responses to each comment follow the original comment letter or the hearing transcript in the case of the commissioner comments. The final EIR also includes limited revisions to the draft EIR that resulted from the comments. The revisions are intended to correct, clarify, or amplify information in the draft EIR. They did not affect the analysis or the conclusions in the draft EIR. And overall, no new significant environmental impacts, no new mitigation measures, and no substantial increase in the severity of an earlier identified impact resulted from the comments or the responses to the comments. Therefore, recirculation of the draft EIR is not required pursuant to SEQA guidelines, section 15088.5. Together, the draft EIR and the final EIR constitute the complete environmental impact report for the project. And lastly, the final EIR also includes a mitigation monitoring and reporting program, which describes the actions that must take place to implement each mitigation measure identified in the draft EIR. The timing of those actions, the entities responsible for implementing and monitoring the actions, and steps for verification of compliance. So I'll end my presentation with a quick overview of some of the key comments that we received and the city's responses to those comments. And again, happy to address any of these comments or our responses further during the question and answer session if you'd like. Several commenters raised questions and concerns. Several commenters raised questions and concerns, or not concerns, sorry, based questions essentially, asking for details on how the existing, how the existing ambient air quality data that was used in the EIR were collected. So the response provided by the city clarifies that the air quality data used in the project's analysis reflected pre-pandemic conditions to provide an accurate analysis of transportation-related air quality emissions and impacts. And in addition, the evaluation of construction emissions were based on the construction equipment list and the vehicle and worker estimates that were provided by the project sponsor. Another comment asked if there was adequate existing water infrastructure to serve the project. And the response to this comment clarifies that the project would replace and upgrade the water lines in both Adams Court and O'Brien Drive in response to concerns raised by the Menlo Park Fire Protection District. With these water infrastructure improvements, the proposed project and the surrounding area would be adequately served. In addition, several comments asked for clarification on the TDM measures to be implemented as part of the project. And the response here clarifies that the TDM plan, which was included as Appendix 3.1 in the draft EIR, includes measures such as bicycle parking and storage and subsidized transit tickets that support sustainable or alternative modes of transportation. Finally, a handful of comments asked for clarification on the number of parking spots to be provided as part of the project. And if there was any relationship between parking, particularly the cost of parking, and reductions in VMT or vehicle miles traveled. The response to these comments, this comment and related comments, clarify that the proposed project would provide 706 parking spaces and that charging for parking is sometimes one potential method for reducing VMT. However, in this case, largely because parking garages and lots in Menlo Park generally do not charge for parking, that this feature was not included as part of the TDM plan. And rather, the TDM plan encourages alternative modes of transportation to reduce VMT. And again, we also have Hexagon, the project transportation consultant with us tonight, if you have further questions on those topics. Lastly, I'll just reiterate that the comments and the responses on the draft EIR did not trigger recirculation under SEQA. And that concludes my presentation on the final EIR. The EIR team and I are happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mickelson, and to your team for the work and for being here. Mr. Turner, did you want to move through to the presentation from the applicant at this point so that everything was before us before we moved to any clarifying questions? How would you recommend we go?
Yes, I would recommend moving to the applicant's presentation and then doing questions altogether.
All right, that would be my proposal as well. Any concern from commissioners with that approach? All right, terrific. Mr. Tarleton, I see you've come on video. Welcome back. The floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Chair DeCarty and Planning Commissioners. I'm John Tarleton. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you again tonight. We at Tarleton are very pleased to be moving this application forward. I want to thank all of you, staff and the EIR consultants. Please know that I appreciate all of your hard work. Out of respect for your time, we have abbreviated our presentation on the project itself, which, as we've discussed in the past, has received unanimously positive feedback during several previous hearings. Tonight, together, we have the possibility to take an important step for Menlo Park. The Commission has the opportunity to take an important step towards stemming the outflow of homegrown technology and manufacturing companies leaving for other Bay Area cities just as they are hitting their stride on revenue and associated sales tax generation. As many of you know, the Bayfront District has historically been the economic breadbasket for Menlo Park, generating more than half of the city's general fund revenue. In the early 1990s, Menlo Park lost its number one sales tax generator. At that time, Cisco Systems, a company born in Menlo Park, occupied three of our buildings and was generating sales of approximately $1 billion per year. They needed significant expansion space, and they specifically needed space worthy of a corporate headquarters. The zoning of this area did not then allow for this type of building. To give you a sense of the magnitude of our loss as a community when Cisco left Menlo Park, they went on to generate an average of $13.5 billion per year in sales over the subsequent 10 years, the average lease term for corporate headquarters. We're talking about a loss of 100 times their last year's sales tax revenue generation for the city. We cannot say for sure which of the more than 60 life science companies currently occupying incubator space will be the next systems for Menlo Park. However, we already have two potential candidates, both of whom will be needing just this type of building in the next couple of years. One of whom has already been on the city's top 25 sales tax generator list for over a decade. During the general plan update that resulted in the creation of the city's first and only life science district, roughly half of the land area originally designated for this district was lost to other uses. This further increases the urgency and importance of taking steps to plan and build these types of buildings needed to keep key technology and manufacturing businesses within the city's master-planned life science district. Approving this project tonight is taking that step. Also on the call with us tonight are important members of our design team. Susan Eschweiler will provide a brief review of the project's architecture and goals. Gordon Huether is available for any questions you may have regarding the public art portion of the project. Of course, I'm available for any and all questions you may have about the project.
Thank you, Mr. Tarleton. And I apologize, were you turning over to somebody from your team to pick up the presentation?
Thank you.
Yes, okay, apologies.
Yeah. Mr. Turner, may we have the slides, please? Thank you. Good evening, Chair DeCarty, Commissioners and Members of the public. Tonight, I'd like to spend a few minutes to recap the highlights of our presentation from the study session in May. The 1350 Adams Project, as you've seen from the ICF presentation, is the first new life science building in the Menlo Park Life Science District. We have other projects in the, in application process shown in the orange along 1125 O'Brien and Willow 1005 and 1320 Willow that will enhance the district, but 1350 is the first building that will be about placemaking for innovative science. The project is a five-story building in an 11-acre property that shares the property with 1305 O'Brien Drive, a two-story building that was an AIA award-winning adaptive reuse building that became the headquarters for Pacific Biosciences. That building is about 188,000 square feet and it faces O'Brien Drive. The, our site for the 1350 is the four-acre rear portion of the site that faces Adams Court. And it's surrounded by heritage trees that we want to preserve and retain as many of them as possible. We have a variety of ways for people to arrive at the site, and we want to bring in public areas so that people could experience it and the many open spaces that the site presents. We have at the corner, the primary public space, Adams Court and Adams Drive come together to create a gathering space amidst a various tall stand of trees. We have Innovator's Public Art Walk that goes the full length of Adams Drive and connects to the rest of the park. And we have beautiful entryway at the corner at the Crescent Park, Crescent Drive of Adams Court. The connectivity that we have created is all about the public art space and the public open space that's shown in green. And the Tarleton's had already created a beautiful campus amenities building at 1440 O'Brien Drive. And that includes a publicly accessible restaurant called 1440 Eats. It's a really nice little spot cafe. And we're creating a really great connectivity between the, with the, where the gray line is shown that would be our publicly accessible Innovator's Public Art Walk. So we're really connecting the blue dot entry of 1350 Adams Court with the campus amenities building. We also have a publicly accessible open space along the west side where Meta will be preparing to create the future Passao that's shown in blue. So you can see that the entire site is surrounded by public open space. In detail, on our site, we have created a, a corner, a publicly accessible open space, a very, a nice garden space with the heritage trees and the public walk. We have an entry crescent driveway that comes to the front door, which is the main part of the lobby. And as we've mentioned before, there are three main modules that step back from the corner to create the open space and to give the building a really nice modulation. To arrive at the site, you can come by Adams Drive to park underneath the full level of parking underneath the entire podium. Or you can come on Adams Court to the entry plaza and up the ground stairs to the entry lobby. You can come down Adams Court to the cul-de-sac and then proceed to the underground parking or continue on to the upper parking entrance where we have three levels of parking structure tucked under the western module of the building. So features of the site, we have onsite bicycle storage, that's a key part of our TDM plan. 60 spaces, 48 in long-term spaces and cage on the ground floor of the garage space and 12 short-term spaces out by the front entrance. We, the tenant will be providing showers and changing rooms that are included in the tenant improvements. And then we have the onsite restaurant that we mentioned at 1440 Eats. Menlo Park Rides is a great program that the Tarleton's provide where there's free campus-wide bike share for all the tenants, where we have enterprise car share for qualified tenants. And believe it or not, 150 existing electrical vehicle charging stations already on the campus that will be supplemented by this project with 72 new EV stations and 36 pre-wired in the new building. And then for shuttle service, the Tarleton's have their own private shuttle that has four destinations, actually five, with two locations in San Francisco. So it takes people from Bart, from Caltrain, and to remote locations in San Francisco to the, back and forth to the park. This is a view from looking at the corner of Adams and Adams with a tall stand of trees where you can see the modulation of the architecture of the building, the main entry and the two-story, the deck at the second floor. You can see the red umbrellas where that would be private open space. And you can see people walking on the publicly accessible paths at the corner. There is also going to be new public sidewalks that are coming along Adams Court and Adams Drive. You can see people walking along the street edge. The building itself is made of GFRC in white and gray with blue glass, blue bird safe glass. So we'll have blue tinted glazing with bird safe glass across the front. You can see here the module. This is from the western property line. Looking towards, towards the east, you can see the module stepping back. And this is where you would access from the cul-de-sac to the parking garage levels at the back or continue around the backside of the property. Our stairs are all expressed at the end with glazing. So that is to, and daylighting, so that is doing, encourage people to take the stairs rather than the elevators. The front entrance way is surrounded by a set of, series of portals, bird safe clear glass and then clear glass at the, at the primary entry. And here you see the grand stairway coming up from Adams Court to the plaza level. And to the left, you can see one of the sculptures, the innovative science sculptures in the, in the landscape itself. So let's recap about the sustainability features of the project. We are going for gold, lead 4.1 gold, core and shell target. And that would be an equivalency target. Dual plumbing in preparation for municipal recycled water. Tarleton's have committed to purchasing 100% renewable energy from PCE as well as purchasing carbon offsets. And there will be onsite solar power generation. There's water efficiency landscape, of course, below that is compliant for low water use in the landscape. And we did a very detailed water budget that was able to reduce our water, anticipated water use by 35%. And we will be having onsite portable tanks at the roof. Now, talking about the circulation, as we talked about the key, how this building connects to the rest of the park. We have, on this slide, similar to the previous slide, but now we've shown where sculptures would be for the innovation innovator scientists. And this is really the public art walk that we're creating that connects from the entrance way of Adams Court to the communities, campus amenities building. And we also have one of our innovator science sculptures at the end of the Passao on the western edge. And that is a publicly accessible pathway to the innovator. So we really, last time we had a presentation by Gordon, and we really want to recap for you what our view is for the, for celebrating innovation and the scientists. And we have, we've been studying different scientists and working on through the selections and how to pose the scientists to bring them to life. Gordon really wants to inspire the spirit of humanity by bringing beauty and meaning through his art. And we want to celebrate the science. We have created the destination that can really create that sense of place for science and innovation and educate people, not just to tell them about, but educate about the history and inspire them to make their own new scientific discoveries. So in this slide, you can see how we're anticipating one of the scientists statues of more than 125% of life size and with a QR plaque that will give you information and history about his scientific discoveries and give you further information on where you can find more information about this. By honoring our past innovators, we will be sharing how they've contributed to humanity, and they will help to see the future discoveries. We want to bring the landscape, the architecture and the art together in a beautiful holistic and inspiring way where people can sit amongst the scientists and, and feel their presence and be excited about what they have learned from, from these scientists and these sculptures. We want to bring that layer of education, inspiration, and an important layer of humanity. And this will create a lovely public amenity at 1350 Adams Court. I'd like to close with our one-minute video of the Innovator's Public Art Walk. So here we are, walking from 1440 Eats up to the front door of 1350 Adams Court. We start at the, at the cafe and we And we proceed towards the street and you can see one of the sculptures off to the right. And then another sculpture across the street will cross the crosswalk. And you'll see the first scientist on the left. The QR placards on the little kiosk. You'll see the two sidewalks of the public sidewalk, new public sidewalk along the street curb. And then the meandering sidewalk amongst the landscape on the way to the thirteen fifty project. Along with there'll be pathway lighting, public seating. QR codes and sculptures. And a we low landscape. Then we have the entrance to the building, another statue. And coming around to the front door. Thank you very much commissioners for your time tonight, and we hope that you will approve our project.
Thank you, Mrs. Heschweiler and your team for the presentation. So uh, next would be turning it over to public. Comment, but before that, are there clarifying questions? For staff or the applicant at this time from commissioners? And I will note that Commissioner Thomas joined us midway through the presentation. Welcome Commissioner Thomas. Any clarifying questions for staff or the applicant before public comment? All right, Mr. Turner, why don't we? Do public comment at this time?
All right, um, at this time, if you would like to give public comment, please click the raise hand button at the bottom of your Zoom screen. Um, if or if you are calling into tonight's meeting, click star nine on your phone keypad. Not seeing any public comments that at the moment.
I will make a pitch. I want to confirm, Mr. Turner, that this is the last time that the planning commission will be seeing this project. Is that correct?
Yes, this is the public hearing on the certification of the final E I R and um. Final actions on the entitlements.
So I just wanted to make sure that anybody who was joined this evening that would like to make a comment to the planning commission on this project. This is the, this is the time. So with that last. Encouragement, we'll pause for a minute before closing public comment. I take it I failed, Mr. Turner?
I do not see any public comments or raised hands at the moment.
All right, we will go ahead and close public comment then. And we'll bring it up to the dais for commissioners, questions, comments, and ultimately motion. Um, I I want to clarify with you, Mr. Turner, what we're doing this evening and then to suggest the pathway forward. If the commissioners are okay. There are five things that we are essentially going to act on, but they are in two buckets. I believe one is around certifying the final environmental impact review. The associated mitigation measure and plans. And that uh, also includes the SEQA certification. So there's that bucket of three. And then we also are doing the use permit and the architectural control. I'm wondering if we should or would make sense to split those and to suggest two different motions. To the commission as opposed to putting those all together. Um, so that we could uh, focus first on the first part around the items with the E I R. And then the second part around the items with the remainder of the project. We've done this in the past. I wonder, it was not suggested by staff. Um, Mr. Turner, would you recommend that we go ahead and clump these all together into one resolution? Uh, or does it make sense to to split this into the two pieces as I suggest?
Um, it's a little bit up to you. Technically, the um. E I R would need to be certified prior to approval of the use permit and architectural control. Um, so if you want to split it up and um. Talk about the discuss the final E I R. Make a recommendation and and act on that portion uh, before moving to the um, land use entitlements. I I think that's acceptable. Um, or you can do them together.
All right, let's go ahead and split them in the way that you have on the recommended actions. It's essentially adopt a resolution, then adopt a second resolution. So it's on the screen. Um, commissioners, are you okay? We'll do the first part, uh, discussion, conversation. You can talk about anything, of course. But uh, the first thing we'll look for is a resolution pertaining to the first three items. Uh, once we do that with certification of the I R, then we can um, go to the remainder items, the use permit, our potential control. Commissioner Barnes?
Procedurally, uh, if that is permissible, I think it's a great approach and allows to chunk out bodies of discussion distinctly. So I support that. And I think that's an efficient way to go through it.
All right, I think we're allowed to excuse the noises in the background here, if you can hear them. All right, let's go ahead then with that. Any commissioner concerns with that approach? All right. So again, uh, clarifying questions, discussion, comments about any aspect of the project, but initially we'll be looking for a motion regarding regarding the first three items. Certifying the final environmental impact report, the mitigation monitoring reporting program. Uh, adoption, and then the SEQA findings. And so with that, let me turn it over to the commission. Uh, who would like to begin? Richard Riggs.
I swear I'm cornered into being the first to speak. Um. So um, I'm gonna. Pose. Four questions. For which uh. Uh, we cannot expect answers tonight, but I think it is good for us when we approve a major project. Under Connect Menlo. To sort of have these questions up on the blackboard. The first is. Where will an additional six hundred and fifty employees live? Uh, our housing analysis indicates that eighty percent will not live in Menlo Park. So we'll have something over a hundred looking for housing here in town. And the rest will be commuting to the additional five hundred and eighty eight car spaces. Number two out of four. Where will the water come from to supply? These additional six hundred and fifty employees. The and the additional hundred, hundred and fifty residents. Third, where will the electrical power come from? To assure climate control. And an additional building for an additional six hundred and fifty people. And another hundred, hundred and fifty residences after work. And then finally, consistent with Connect Menlo and and thus. Our E I R for this project shows uh, no significant impact. The traffic will get worse. Um, and the reminder is in our level of service analysis. All of these four points, we have already accepted. We accepted in twenty sixteen when we passed Connect Menlo. But I think it's just good to have this up in the background. As we move forward with the decision that the city made at that time for development. So having. Put that out. I will say again that this project. Serves Menlo Park well. Mr. Tarleton expressed well. How significant our. Life sciences district has been. This has long been one of my concerns about why life sciences has not. Uh, gendered uh. Greater efforts and greater support in the city. And uh, it has gotten it in the um, L S zone. And again, to express that. The design, the the sighting as well as the building itself. Are as has. Repeatedly uh, resulted um. From Ms. Eschweiler's firm. Uh, is an excellent and attractive design. And entirely appropriate for R and D and office buildings. If this were meant to be on. Middle Avenue or El Camino or Santa Cruz, we would have completely different expectations, but in the L S zone. Uh, this is appropriate and a very attractive building. So just to reflect our duties tonight. I'd like to uh. State this commissioner's opinion that it is consistent with the general plan and the zoning zoning standards. That the iron environmental report. Uh, is complete and deserves certification. That we can adopt the M M R P. Grant the use permit and the architectural control approval. Um. And uh, without prejudicing any uh, comments to follow, I would like to move approval at this time. For the project.
So Mr. Riggs, just to clarify, you have a motion to approve as submitted by staff. On all of those elements put together, is that correct?
Yes, and and the reason that I enumerated the elements, yes.
Okay.
If that's acceptable, uh, and if you would prefer the E I R to be addressed first, I'd be happy to do that.
Uh, I guess because we just agreed that we would pursue it that way. I would, if that's okay with you, to do those in two pieces.
All right, so let's uh, let's make the finding for the E I R.
Okay, uh, the mitigation and then uh, the the first three items essentially.
Yes.
Okay, that's separate out uh, for later, the use permit, the architectural control. Okay. So thank you, Mr. Riggs, and we have a motion on the table. Um. To that effect. Other commissioner questions or comments regarding any aspect of the project or a second to the motion? Commissioner Barnes?
And I'm sorry, just to be clear, we are doing it in the sequential order of the I R first. So I'll make a motion for the findings. Um, I'll be second on Commissioner Riggs's first.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any other questions from commissioners or clarifying questions? Uh, before we vote, I do have one. Um, and I think it's probably for um, the consultants on this. So um. Is there a way to? Describe the base level being the preferred from an environmental impact standpoint as opposed to the project? Um. What areas were the significant improvements from an E I R standpoint with the base level over the project that made that? So is there? Some way to describe? Are some environmental benefits outsized relative to others? Between the base level and the project? And what are the key levers that um, made that base level the preferred?
Sure, I can answer that. And just to clarify, by base level, are you referring to the base level alternative that was evaluated in the E I R alternative section?
Correct, correct. And please correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe in the alternatives, that was the preferred from an E I R standpoint. Is that correct?
It was. It was identified as the environmentally superior alternative. Um, and SEQA requires that an E I R identify an environmentally superior alternative that is not the project and is not the. No project alternative. So of the alternatives, the other alternatives considered, this was the superior one. Um, I think the primary impacts that were reduced compared to. Those of the project were impacts related to utilities um, and energy. Also, population and housing, and that's essentially just. A feature of that alternative being less dense than the project. So. It's going to have a reduced demand for those uh, resources. Um. I will say that there was one impact where that alternative resulted in a greater impact of the project, and those were noise impacts. Um, and I'd have to go back and look, but I think that that had more to do with the specific configuration uh, and and conceptual design of that alternative. Uh, but I would have to go back and look.
No, that's helpful. So if if there had been essentially a sub base level. Al- almost by definition, it would have been the environmentally superior project. Is that correct?
I think that's a, yeah, a fair statement.
All right, but the 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 levers are essentially utilities and energy use. And then population and housing. So that's the impacts on the people associated with. Is the housing relative to the project or where they end up living? This is sort of back to Commissioner Riggs's point.
Yeah, the population and housing analysis in the SEQA document is related to the project's consistency essentially with population and housing projections that are promulgated by A B A G. Um, so since you have less population and less secondary housing demand associated with that population. You know, both projects fit within projections, but that one took up a lesser portion of that demand, so to speak.
All right, thank you. Um, and then I think my my final thing on the I R is going to be more of a comment. We've had an exchange around parking the last time. In this mix, and we don't need to go over that again. Um, but I will say that I am still um, bewildered. That there is not a pathway to look at dramatically reduced parking and the potential benefits. For the environment from that reduced parking. And I think the T D M measures that uh, uh, Mr. Tarleton and team have put in place over the years are exemplary. Uh, there are so many more levers available, including uh, adequate pricing for parking. It continues to um, encourage people to find alternate ways to be able to get uh, to this location. Um, we are not exploring those. And I think we've got an outdated plan and outdated policy for the significant concerns around traffic. Around the environmental impacts and around the benefits to our community over the long term. And it is frustrating to me that we do not design within the A I R a way to be able to substantially tease that out. Because as you noted at the very beginning, which is right, the E I R is a sunshine document for members of the public community are concerned to be able to make distinctions and to better understand the potential impacts of. Projects in our community, and I think we are failing ourselves on this one. We don't need to go over it again. Um, you've done it exactly the way it is supposed to be. Uh, Commissioner Riggs has pointed that out around the um, program E I R from Connect Menlo. Uh, but um, this is failing us as a community right now, and it's frustrating to be in this position. I have said that I won't certify any I R that doesn't look at parking with those reduced levels. Um, I am not going to be the vote that keeps this project from going forward. Uh, but since I'll be the last one voting as chair, that's why um, if it's going to be approved, you will see me voting against. It is a frustration with our E I R process, especially around this element. So with that, any other questions or comments before we have a first from Commissioner? Uh, Riggs, right, a second from Commissioner Barnes, is that what we have on this? And um, uh, Mr. Turner, can you just put the slide up again so that we all know what we're voting on, which is going to be your first three elements? I just want to make sure that we're good on that.
Yes, I'll have Von put that up here again.
So perfect. So just to verify with Commissioners Riggs and Barnes. Um, your uh, resolution is the first part of this, the first three bullets as submitted by staff. Commissioner Riggs, is that correct? And Commissioner Barnes, is that what? You had intended?
Yes.
Uh, my second is for those three bowls as well, thank you.
Terrific, okay, I just wanted to clarify. Any uh, final clarifying questions for? Commissioners? All right, then in alphabetical order, Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Doe?
No.
Uh, Commissioner Harris is absent, Commissioner Riggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Tate?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Um, I will vote no. Think I have this right, this, so it passes four to two with the one absent. All right. So we'll now move on, and thank you to everybody for your patience here to the second portion of this, which is. The other aspects of the project, uh, which is consideration of use permit and architectural control. Um, Mr. Barnes, I see your hand raised.
Let me ask. You took public comments previously, so you're not planning to take it again on these two chunks, you just took it once and that covers both of these, is that correct?
It's an excellent point, um, it was introduced in the way and then the agenda, it was all put together. Um, but I would be very happy to open public comment again on this aspect of the project, um, and. And and find doing that, so should I take that suggestion and can we move to that now?
Uh, sure, I would, I'd classify it more as a curiosity, I leave it to the, you know, uh, Chair's discretion on that, and. Uh, yeah, I don't think it's a bad idea, I think it's a great idea always to ask for that, if that's the role you want to take, and then we come back from that to the dais.
Yep.
For comments work, great, so I'll just queue up for that, thank you.
Excellent, I think that's a terrific, thank you for the suggestion. I think this is all commissioners all the time, if there's ever suggestion for us to increase the opportunity for public participation, please feel free to make that in real time. Um, I will now turn to staff to make sure that I'm allowed to do this, Mr. Turner, since you're both managing both this and public comment. Um, if we are allowed, I would love to open public comment on this aspect of the project, which is um, all of the elements concerning use permit and architectural control. We'll see, maybe uh, now we've sparked um, participation, is that a, if we're able to do that, let's go ahead and make that happen.
I believe that's fine, um, I will defer to Karina on that one.
Yes, that's perfectly fine to reopen public comment.
Fantastic, let's do that, Mr. Turner.
All right. Um, once again, if you would like to provide public comment, um. Please click the raise hand button in the bottom of your Zoom. Screen, or if you are calling into tonight's meeting, click star nine on your keypad. At the moment, still not seeing any public uh, raised hands.
I'm sorry, let's just give it a second. All right, going once, going twice, any hands?
Still none.
All right, we'll go ahead and close public comment then. Um, thank you, Mr. Barnes, for the suggestion, I completely concur and I appreciate it, let me turn the floors back to yours.
Thank you, thank you so much, I think um. As you said, it's always great to get any, you know, public comments, so I am going to. I'm in effect, gonna jump the shark here and make a motion on this part as well, and I'll tell you what my purpose is on it. Um, I think for the purposes of use permit and architectural control, I think. This project meets all the different parameters that we've gone through over the multiple meetings. The one piece of it which I still have a challenge with is the. Is the payment of the in lieu fee, and what the motion that I will make is for approval. Of use permit and architectural control. Conditioned upon the expenditure of the community amenity funds for. A community amenity that's either called out in the original Connect Menlo. Community amenities document, or as further amended, restated and otherwise put forward by city council, any new. Um, community amenities document that is as a result of community outreach. But the net is, is approving the project subject to expenditure on a community amenity. From a list, either passed or revised, and not an in lieu fee, so that's my motion.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Barnes. Mr. Tarleton, I see you have your your hand up, let me try to ask staff first. For. If I could, as Chair. Or. I would like to understand the the uh, potential. Um, implications of the. Condition on the in lieu fees that Mr. Barnes is included in his. Motion. I'm happy to ask specific questions, but I guess I just sort of turn it over to you to say, what would that mean for? Uh, the the timeline in the project, or is it in line with past practice in any way, or? Questions along those lines?
Um, through the chair, if I can just ask a cor- clarifying question.
Sure.
Um. So. Is the intent for the payment to be made and then that payment? To be directly used on a community amenity, or is the condition? Somewhat to defer. Payment until um, the applicant is able to identify a community amenity that they are able to. Spend the the appropriate amount of money implementing.
So if it's agreeable to the Chair, I'm happy to elaborate on that, so. It is, it's a mechanics question, and community amenity monies need, as I understand it, to be paid at building apartment, so the. The the desire is not to. Um, impact the timeline, the desire is to have those funds spent on the desired community, on a community many that comes from a. Community outreach process that the community has said that they want, so for that reason. Um, and I, it could be stacked, it could be held, it could be escrowed, and then at a time that that becomes. Um. Available that list, now the tricky part is that that's come back to planning commission, right, because, or there'd be another mechanism, but. Within the process, it's planning commission which goes and approves that, so I haven't thought all the way through the mechanics of it. But just to get real focused on your question, it's not to delay the process, and 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 if we did it. Door number two, which was to have it be predicated on that new list coming first, and then spending, and having it done at that time, no. The the intended to have it spent on something which comes from a community engagement process that the community says it wants. That's the intent. And that Tarleton um, has a hand in and and. It's a, it becomes a slightly trickier question because it's in the 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 true sense of how this is usually done, it's what the developer has a hand in effectuating that community amenity being built, so you have. That piece of it as well, but I haven't even thought that far, but it's. The spirit of it is as stated.
I may pull in Acting Principal Planner Karina Skimart and help me with this one. As far as implementation of that and how. That would work. As a condition.
Um, yes, I think we'd have to probably think it through a little more exactly how that would work, um. The intention, it sounds like the intention is not to delay the timeline of the project, um. And another um, point, that any motion, I assume includes the changes Chris read into the record to the conditions of approval. So I think we would need that clarified, if that's the intention. And I see um, Kyle is is now um, is in the meeting, so he may be able to. Provide a little more uh, feedback on the proposed condition.
Sure, thank you, uh, Karina, and good evening, members of the Planning Commission, Kyle Prada, Planning Manager. So I think I caught most of it, I lost a few things with the transfer from an attendee over to a panelist here, but. Perhaps Commissioner Barnes, if I can try to address um. Your recommendation or or potential condition a little bit here, so the. The the community may use payment in lieu fee. The the council adopted that in lieu fee with the intent that it would allow for applicants, developers to pay. The city of the in lieu fee at a hundred and ten percent, um. To allow us to aggregate funds and then the city to go and procure those amenities for the community, so. To the extent that there might be concerns about the current list versus the potential updates to the list, or making sure that the community may is are on the adopted list. Uh, those would be things that staff would be considering through our dispersal, if you will, of the funds um. To provide community many, so there certainly would be um, a public process for that, there would be opportunity for input. I don't have all the answers today, that's certainly a process we'll be working on, but I think one thing to make sure that's clear is that. The payment of the fee would allow the city to aggregate all the funds of the fees that have been paid, we have taken in some other in in lieu fees so far, um. You know, over the last year or two, um, to provide community amenities, um. You know, for the community, and so so there would be a process in place, it certainly wouldn't be. Uh, intended to be a staff level decision, there there would be check-ins with the the council, there would be a process there, so. If if the concern is about where those fees get used, I think there would, there would be certainly a transparent process, if that helps. And maybe I misunderstood the question or the comment earlier.
The question was for me, so, but just just briefly, so the question was for me, and for me, that's helpful for right now, but yes, Mr. Barnes, let me turn it over to you, because it's on pertinent to your motion.
Uh, yes, thank you, and I, and it is. Um, the spirit of of the condition was that. Uh, certainly beyond staff, um, well, actually, I, it it's not prejudicial to any decision staff might make, it's more. A desire to make sure that this. Process that we've had talked about as it relates to developing a new community, community amenities list, great, you know, let's develop that. Um, I'm looking for the ability to make sure that is spent against a community amenities list that comes from a robust community engagement process. And this is a very imperfect tool to do it through the planning commission and through through approvals of this project, I get that. Uh, and it may not mechanically be feasible, but that's my intent. Um, to do that, and and uh, and the motion can fail. But I want to put forward that I want to see that these community monies get spent against. A community amenities list which is developed sometime in the near future. Uh, from a robust community engagement process, um. And and that's the intent of the condition.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. What I might suggest is we allow continued conversation from commissioners. And let's see where that conversation goes, and if it goes in a direction where this is a live and important topic for many. Then perhaps we should dive deeper into the mechanics, um, as you suggest, Commissioner Barnes. Uh, but let's see where this goes for a while on this topic, um, or on any other aspect of this um, of this project, Commissioner Riggs?
Thank you, um. I don't have uh. Perhaps uh. As clear a preference. Uh, for. How this in lieu fee is handled. But I uh, do in general terms, agree with Mr. Barnes. As we are the final point of approval. What we say on this rather significant, I think it's sixteen million dollars, uh, uh. Direct contribution. Uh, is presumably what uh, will define what can happen. I recall that Mr. Tarleton told us in May that he worked quite hard, and it was actually in the staff report, I think, back in May. Uh, his efforts to define one of the benefits from the list and make an offer for that. And that uh. He got feedback, um, if I understand it, it was council feedback. That nothing quite fit their expectations, and perhaps Mr. Barnes would. Be willing to uh, be more specific about his concerns about how this could get off track. Um, but if I understand it, um. I think a council, whether the current council or the next council following uh, the election in just two months. Uh, could make a decision that all money should be, uh, that the next priority should be. Uh, in enlarging the Burgess Swimming Pool. Um, and um, you know, or 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 any other goal that uh, might fit that council priority. And that. The planning commissions from twenty sixteen onward have worked pretty hard. Uh, to reflect. The wishes of the nearby residents and the city as a whole, as to where these community benefits. Very significant funding should go. So I can support the concept of the list, and I would like to propose that. Uh. Mr. Barnes' motion should be viable, uh, with the simple phrasing that. The amenities are uh, in lieu fund. Uh. Shall be um, uh, is accepted. Uh. Except that. The monies shall be paid. By Tarleton. To. A project from the. City amenities list. Um. And we, we cannot direct anyone other than the applicant, I believe, at this position. But we could do that much, and so uh. Through the chair, I'll I'll ask our Community Development Director to comment on whether that. Uh, sounds like that's something that would work within our city process.
That's Mr. Peralta, or who's, who are you directing that to, Commissioner Riggs?
Mr. Peralta, yes.
Yeah, Planning Manager Peralta.
Yeah, thank you, clarifying, Planning Manager, appreciate the uh.
Oh, sorry, uh, well, we'll get you in a couple of years.
So, no, thank, thank you, Commissioner Riggs, so uh, I'll I'll probably uh. Pull in um, Ed Shaver from the City Attorney's Office at some point here, but just to start, I think one of the potential. Um. Issues with with that condition would be the the nature of. Paying towards a project, um, since th- there aren't necessarily projects. Uh, you know, going forward right now, um, and and part of the intent of the in lieu fee is to allow the city to. To work with the council to identify projects from the community maze list, to then go and implement um, through the city's um. Management process, so, you know, I think there could be some concerns there with. Payment of the fee towards a project, whereas right now. It's set up to be a payment of a fee to the city, further, it's an ordinance of regarding the fee payment. Um, and so payment of the fee to a project outside of. Of that might uh, run afoul of the ordinance and the way that you can handle that through a condition of approval, and so I'll. I'll probably look to Ed for some some additional input there. Um, but I just want to flag that as a potential issue here in terms of the timing for those projects.
Uh, thank you, Kyle, um. Yeah, I would have concerns with doing this because the city council has established a procedure. Um, by ordinance and and uh, to um. Uh, basically, I mean, it it's not authorized by the city's ordinance, so that it. The ordinance specifically allows the developer to make an in lieu fee instead of completing a specified project. And in fact, the city council seems to be encouraging that approach to be able to pool money from different multiple projects perhaps, and then choose the priorities of what the improvements or activities will be funded. So I think, I think that I would suggest that the commission consider making a recommendation to the city council as a side that this funds and other funds be targeted to a, if there's something that you have a if you are interested in prioritizing for the use of the money to identify that, but but not as a condition to this project because the developer has to follow the city's ordinance.
I've got a lot of hands. I also have a I'm just asking a quick clarifying question on one piece of this with my prerogative, Mr. Shaffer. Appreciate the guidance about what the city council is doing or where they're headed. And also that I said at the beginning of this session tonight that we are a policy implementing body, not a policymaking body. But I want to clarify, if we can craft something that works per what Commissioner Barnes would like to do, and I don't mean we, but I mean, if Commissioner Barnes and a second could craft that, it would be within our parameters as a planning commission to vote on and pass that. Is that correct?
I have to confess, I'm not an expert in this, in these nuances of a procedure. So I really can't say, except I would be concerned about any condition that leaves the project in a catch twenty-two situation and the applicant, the Taltons, and that's why I suggested it as a separate matter.
I understand.
The commission advised the city council on its use of the money or make recommendations rather than tying, putting the developer in a very awkward situation.
I appreciate that. I was not trying to speak as a commissioner with my own viewpoint on this. I was trying to speak as chair, trying to understand what the what the available parameters for us as a commission are. So I appreciate that clarification, or at least the understanding that you may not have the depth of understanding about what we may be allowed to do in this instance. I'll take the hands in the order that they've been raised, which I see Commissioner Tate and followed by Commissioner Barnes.
Good evening. Okay, so I, I think I'm did the, did the council ever put together a list? Because I don't think they did, right? Because they were supposed to be compiling something? Like a list of potential community amenities?
My understanding is that that is in process, and that is an engagement between the council and staff as of this time. But staff could clarify.
I think that's a question for me. So through the chair, I'll answer. So correct, the council did identify the need to update the list. We are currently using the list that was adopted previously. The update to the community maze list is in progress, and I don't have an update on the timing for that right now.
Okay, so another question for you then. So this new list that's going to be compiled, and council is working with staff. So will there be any community input at all in that process?
Yeah, I would anticipate substantial community input, absolutely. Certainly, there would be public meetings on the adoption list. The list would need to go through a council resolution. There would be a recommendation on that list, I believe, to the planning commission who was involved in recommending on the previous community maze list. So so there would be a process in place, and there would be other opportunities for outreach that we will certainly consider as staff.
Okay, because I think that's, that's part of the struggle for us as a commission is because it's blind. And, you know, from what I'm understanding from Commissioner Barnes, and each time that he has brought this up, it's because we're just kind of shooting in the dark with the in lieu fees. So it does make us a little reserved, and especially when we look at funds just sitting and sitting without a project for years and years, like with the Housing Commission and Lou Ferranci's, you know, previously. So thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you, Commissioner Tate. Commissioner Barnes?
Thank you for that. And as a there's a point of clarification on my end. In lieu fees are not my purview. The council decides that they want to do in lieu fees, and that's acceptable. That they're a policymaking body that is entirely under discretion. So I am not looking to that my motion with the condition is not looking to do away with in lieu fee as it relates to this project. I totally get the concept of pooling and efficiencies or whatever projects might get done. It's not meant to get in the way of pooling. And even the execution by the developer in this particular project, should it get, should the in lieu fee get paid? Should it get pulled? And should it be collected? Even if the execution is not done by the developer, which is disappointing to me, that's also a decision that's beyond my purview. What I think falls in my my and our purview is the concept of what can get picked. And the whole concept behind Connect Menlo or any engagement process in any community is the community goes through a robust engagement process, comes up with the list, and then within that result, the community amenities are decided upon. And what I am saying is prior to dispersment of the funds of these in lieu funds, they go to a project which has been pulled from an established community engagement process and a new list, if that's a direction that we're going in. What I am utterly uncomfortable with is the language around, or previous language around the city council deciding what they're going to spend it on, because that's not how this approval process goes. The way that the community many process was set up was, whether it's the old list or the new list, it comes to planning commission, and planning commission agrees or disagrees with that with what the community amenity is. By establishing the in lieu fee, city council has in effect taken back some of that power, which is their prerogative. But at the very least, for me to approve this project, I would like the condition upon being whatever the community amenity is and whatever the monies get dispersed to needs to come from a baked list that is a result of a community many process, excuse me, community engagement process, if the last list isn't what we want. So that's what it is. The rest of the things I have no issue with. That's my singular intent by understanding condition and the purposes of clarification.
Mr. Shaffer.
Yeah, just addressing that point, the conditions of approval are conditions applied to the project in the developer. And right now, the developer pays the money. What happens with the money afterwards is out of the developer's control. So it's really not appropriate to put it in a condition of approval on the developer. Developer has to satisfy condition one through eighty to build their project, but they're paying the money. It's their condition. They can't tell the city what to do with it. That's, and that's why I say again, especially if the, if the process is underway to create a new list and the commission will be involved in that, for the commission to be activist in being sure the money gets used for something that is in the final list that has been vetted by the commission.
Mr. Barnes, we have your hand up still. Commissioner Riggs?
I apologize. I missed the conclusion of Mr. Shaffer's statement somehow. Could I, would he indulge me in a restatement?
Yes, I was saying that the conditions of approval are conditions for the developer to satisfy, to be able to get their building permit and occupy their project, and that condition is pay this money. What happens to the money afterwards is not a requirement or under the control of the developer, and it wouldn't, to me, doesn't seem appropriate to include it as a condition of approval of this project because that's not something that the developer can satisfy, one of the fifty conditions they have to satisfy. And so I was suggesting that the commission be involved in the process of creating the new list and advocating to the council how the money is used.
But to but if I don't want to be involved in the creation of a list because that's not my job, and the only other recourse that I have is to vote against the project because to vote against the project, to have this be tucked in is one of my reasons for objecting to it, right? Not, I could pick anyone, I could articulate what my objection is or not. That's my prerogative, but I could just vote against it. So this is a, this is a finding a way, because it's not this body's role to create this list. It's not this body's role to approve the list. It is, that's another function of outreach in different parts of the city. It's this body's role to approve projects subject to whatever list is created. So if the only option is to vote against the project based on a level of objection to not knowing where it's going to go, then if I'm left with that as the only thing, I was hoping I wasn't. But if I am, that's an important clarification. And that's where I was going with that. Thank you.
Mr. Barnes, can I try to ask a question that might, might help clarify, if not, I apologize, of Mr. Shaffer? With in lieu fees that are paid in, is there something in some law somewhere at the state or local level that says that they must be applied to some list that has been developed by some process? Or in fact, is there another mechanism where a body to articulate? I'm not putting words in your mouth, Commissioner Barnes, so I'll just sort of say that a body could arbitrarily decide it goes to something else without any community engagement at all. So is there, is there already a parameter on utilization of in lieu fees? It says it must go towards some list that has been approved by some process.
To my knowledge, there is no state law saying that there must be a list, but there are standards that funds are collected to defer, to defray the the effect of a project on a community and that the fund should be used to benefit that community or to mitigate the effects. So there is that, that connection, that nexus of relationship. I might suggest that the commission, because I think it would be draconian to deny this project because of this policy issue. But I might suggest that you include in the resolution just a recommendation to the city council to use the in lieu fee for a community amenity determined through a public process, which it sounds like is what you're looking at, that it not be used for something totally unrelated to the community, and that you make that as part of a just include that as a recommendation to the council.
Thank you. Appreciate that, that guidance, that potential, and Commissioner Barnes and other commissioners could.
And the council, sorry, and the council can amend the list and then apply the fee to something on that list. That's within their prerogative as well.
Mr. Prada, you've come on screen. You want to add to that or?
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity. So just to further clarify, so in the city zoning ordinance, the it identifies community amenities, first off, and just I won't read the ordinance here, but just to paraphrase, there is a statement regarding the location community amenities being in the area north of one oh one to the bay regarding community maze under Connect Menlo, John Plan Update. Regarding in lieu fee payments, it does go on to say that you know, for any of these payments made, the city will place all these payments in restricted community amenities fund to be used to implement the community man is identified on the adopted list by the council. So to the extent that there is an update to the list, the city would place these funds in a restricted list that restricted fund, excuse me, that then would be used to implement communities from the list. So right now we have a current list that was, you know, adopted with Connect Menlo. There has been discussions at the council level of updating that. That is a process that we are in. If it is updated, and when it's updated, you know, these funds would apply, with that list would be what these funds would be applied to. So there is a a very clear guidance through the ordinance and the implementing regulations for community amenity in lieu fees that they would be used to apply to the community maze list that's currently adopted or would be potentially updated and re-adopted by the city council. So there is that, that connection. I just want to make sure that's been made clear.
So for me, just to play that back is in lieu fees that in fact does have to go against a list. We have a list currently right now, and you previously in answering a question, Mr. Prada said that the city council is working through updating the list and anticipates going through a highly engaged community engagement process to update that list. They would update the list and then could apply to this new list, the in lieu fees. So if I have that right, it does have to be against a list. The, I suppose the concern could be that a city council could arbitrarily come up with a list out of the blue, which would, I think, break faith with where Mr. Barnes was headed, Commissioner Barnes was headed. But from your description, the updating of this list is, is the process is working to have extensive community engagement. I know you already answered this question, Mr. Prada, but does that look like in the same type of approach that was utilized in community engagement with originally with Connect Menlo?
Yeah, it's a fair question. I don't have a good answer on what the extent of the outreach would be. I I can tell you, it certainly would go through public meetings, and I would expect that we would look at other opportunities as well to you know, enhance that engagement beyond just the standard or rigid planning commission and council meetings. Absolutely would be on our, our, our list.
Okay. Thank you for that. I'll just draw us back. We have this aspect which we've been having a discussion about, but there are all other aspects of this project that are open for discussion for comment, for questions. Ultimately, we've got the use permit and architectural controls, so everything involved with that. So we can by all means continue on with this discussion for right now. We could put that aside and look at other issues the commissioners have questions about or would like to raise. And continue our discussion here. Mr. Riggs?
Could I urge just to move forward with motion at this point?
I have some clarifying questions, so I was trying to defer to other commissioners, but I will go ahead and get mine on the table so that we can move forward then. So this is probably a question for Mr. Turner. Mr. Turner, when you talked about the Paseo and waiting on the Paseo for Willow Village to come through, if it doesn't come through, then the funds would, would come to build half of the Paseo on this project. Is there a timeline for this? What happens if for some reason Willow Village is delayed by a matter of years or something like that? Is there a timeline that says by date X, if Willow Village is not approved, the Paseo, the funding would go to half of the sale?
The condition is it's currently written, doesn't have a timeline on that. The condition is to enter into an agreement with the city for the deferred construction of the applicant's portion of the Paseo. So certainly, as we work with the applicants to put together that agreement, we could build in a timeline.
Conceptually, what is a reasonable timeline you might be headed toward without negotiating in real time? Are we talking months or a year or two or ten years? What timeframe would we be in if we were thinking about putting a time cap on that?
I may want to defer that one to Planning Manager Kyle, just because he has a better understanding of the timeline for the Willow Village project. I'm not sure which phase the Paseo is is proposed in, to be honest.
Yeah, thank you. So there's a lot of variables there. It is a little difficult to predict the specific timing for construction. The Paseo comes along with a, just thinking through some of the the phasing that we've been working on with the applicant, probably comes in in the earlier part of the project with the backbone infrastructure, the roadways. But that being said, the the timing is speculative right now. I mean, we're still working through a lot of variables. The entitlements are also still going through the the process. It is discretionary applications. I don't want to prejudge anything about that application. That's why to the point that there is that contingency plan in this project, that condition. So unfortunately, I don't have a great answer for for picking a a time or a date or a timeline.
Okay, it's a concern of mine. I mean, I think connectivity and people being able to move by all means through the community, by the community, have it be welcoming. I feel slightly uncomfortable that through no fault of Mr. Tarleton's team, ultimately that the sale might not get built, depending on what happens with the Willow Village project. And yet there's resources associated with this project there. So for me, I would love to find something that at least puts some time parameter on that in the mix. So thank you. I have a couple other questions. I just want to get back to those. This may be for Mr. Tarleton, and this is my lack of understanding of life sciences. In the staff report, it talks about the utilization of electricity for the entire project except in the lab space. And we had this discussion before, but in the staff report, it says lab space heating. Is it heating as in heating the lab space for the occupants? So they're comfortable when it's cold outside? Or is there some other use for lab space heating and natural gas?
Thank you, Chair, for the question. We do not typically have Bunsen burners in the laboratories anymore. So the heating in the actual laboratory is done electrically. What the report is referring to is the heating of the laboratory space itself.
So it is that, so why do you need natural gas to heat the laboratory space and can't use electricity then?
Be happy to go through a detailed discussion of the engineering behind it. We are quite supportive of the goals in terms of, you know, environmental goals of the city. We have been working very hard with our engineering team to try and come up with ways to to accomplish that which you've asked. In fact, we are into the city at the moment for our first all-electric lab building. It is all of 13,000 square feet. Doing laboratory heating on a large scale is simply not feasible at the moment from a technology standpoint.
Because it's too big a space? Is that what it is? Or what's the?
It's it's, yes, the size of the space, but it's also the volume and velocity of the air. Heating air with an electric element directly is very inefficient. And then, I mean extraordinarily inefficient. I don't know if you have an electric car. I was an early adopter of electric cars and the reason that all electric cars come with heated seats is that that's a much more efficient way to keep the passengers comfortable during the winter. If you turn the heat on an electric car and heat the cabin, you will kill your battery almost instantaneously.
So I I appreciate the beginning of the of the lesson in that mix. I I will say it's perplexing just because we've had other very large projects that have not had that concern that have come before us. So.
They are, they are office projects.
So that's the distinction from your standpoint.
Yes, and and again, Chair DeCarty, I welcome you or any member of the Planning Commission, either individually or collectively to come to the to the park and we'd be happy to show you the engineering behind heating. There is only one project that we know of in the Bay Area that does heating of laboratory and and life science manufacturing space electrically. And I would characterize that project as essentially cold fusion. They're putting more energy in than they're getting out.
Fair enough. Perhaps your swag can be battery-powered heated vests for employees or something in that mix. As long as I have you on this, you're going to utilize offsets, which is fabulous. This is your choice, I assume, or it's not mandated? Is that right?
I honestly don't know whether it's mandated. We're happy to do it.
So have you done this before? Have you utilized offsets?
Yes, we have other, we have other projects. We, in fact, I can't currently think of any of our buildings in Menlo Park Labs that don't already purchase 100% renewable electricity.
Yeah, okay. I just think as you look into offsets, they're fraught, they're fraught with permanence and they're fraught with additionality with the fact that you're actually paying for something that would have been done. So just to, just wish that you dive into them all enough that they're certified in a way that those two and other concerns are addressed would be great.
Understood.
Everyone, thank you. And with that, I think that's the set of clarifying questions I had. So on that, so Commissioner Rags has urged moving moving ahead here, other commissioner questions at this point on the project? All right. So I believe we have a motion from Commissioner Barnes. And Commissioner Rigs, did you second that motion? You did not?
No.
So we have a motion from Commissioner Barnes. Do we have a second on the motion from Commissioner Barnes? Or do we have somebody else that would like to make a motion at this time? Or any other clarifying questions? Commissioner Rakes?
What is the current status of the motion from Commissioner Barnes, given that staff has issues with the significant issues with the modification to the in lieu payment?
The the current status is it doesn't have a second, so at the moment it.
I meant the wording of the in lieu payment.
Oh, I see. Well, if you're interested in, so are you interested in seconding that motion?
Well, if the if the in lieu payment condition can meet staff's approval. And then I will note Mr. Schaefer's suggestion that we follow up with a a commission recommendation as a separate item. So yes, if we can avoid the conflicts that staff has enumerated with that motion, I would second. But if Mr. Barnes would clarify what currently his motion is.
Yes, thank you for that. So the motion being conditioning upon it, I withdraw the condition to it and upon advice from city council. As ineffective as it may be, it at least scratches an itch for the resolution part of it to let the council know that the monies need to be spent as per an approved community amenities list, which is as a result of a community engagement process. So so I revise my motion to say just that. It is approve the architectural control in the use permit and include a resolution stating that the Planning Commission requests, requires, resolves that the community money money gets used against established community amenity list. Through a robust community engagement process as as obvious as that seems to be, it doesn't seem to be the route that we have had taken over the last couple of years. And I'm still wondering, and it's a it's with the desire to remind the community, the city council that that's what we're anticipating, expecting from them.
So can I just clarify, Commissioner Barnes? So your motion is to recommend adoption as per in the staff report and with the revisions presented by Mr. Turner at the beginning of this presentation this evening for use permit and architectural control per staff. And then you want a recommendation associated with it along the lines that you talked about? Is that, do I have that accurate?
Yes, I am. I am reiterating what city council said was a path towards providing some guidance to council in that path as enumerated by city council, councils. Not city council, IL, but OUL, that that the we want to make sure that they spend it against a community many list from a robust community engagement process.
Mr. Rakes, your hand is first. With your permission, I I see that Ms. Doherty has come on. Perhaps is that okay for clarification to go that route first? Can I indulge you on that? Okay, welcome, Ms. Doherty. Thank you for joining us. We appreciate your time.
Thank you, Chair DeCarty. I I wanted to echo Commissioner Barnes's addition and revision to his motion and say that I I I believe that this is a reasonable and clearly articulated revision to the resolution that we would add a statement to the effect that Mr. Barnes just articulated and provide that the commission is recommending that any in lieu fee funds be utilized for an established community amenities list that has undergone a robust public engagement process. And I think we are we believe that this is an acceptable revision to the resolution.
All right. While I have you, Ms. Doherty, can I just clarify? So the city council passed a resolution around in lieu fees a year or so ago. And in the section on in lieu payment says the city shall place all in lieu payments in a restricted community amenities fund to be used to implement community amenities identified in a list adopted by city council resolution. So that part is set, but what we have with Commissioner Barnes and what your recommendation is that that list needs to go through a robust community engagement process. That would be the distinction.
Well, I think, I'm apologies, Chair DeCarty. What what Commissioner Barnes had been getting at is my understanding is was a response to Mr. Prada's statement that that list can be revised at any time by the council. And so unlike other in lieu fees, the fees that the applicant pays in lieu of constructing and providing community amenities need not be spent on amenities that are identified in the list at the time of payment of the in lieu fee. But rather, the council can amend that list at any time and can utilize and and use the fees paid by applicant for any amenity identified on that list. And so what I think I hear Commissioner Barnes saying is to the extent that there are revisions to that list, he wants the a robust public participation process to be undertaken to revise that list prior to expenditure of any of the in lieu fee funds.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Rakes, thank you for your patience.
Well, no, no problem, and that's helpful because I was curious whether or not we had to separate the commission's recommendation from this motion, you know, as a third motion. And it sounds like we don't, so I will second the motion as defined by Mr. Barnes.
So we have a first from Commissioner Barnes. We have a second from Commissioner Riggs. I see Commissioner Tate's hand. I let's, yeah, Commissioner Tate. And then I'd like to make sure that staff understands is very clear what the motion and what the recommendation is that we'd be voting on. So I'll turn to staff in a minute. Commissioner Tate?
I'm not sure that I am clear, excuse me, on what you read is that in my mind, that council can decide whatever goes on this amenity list. But then our recommendation is that there's a robust community engagement process. So I think I have a breakdown with what the city attorney was saying. Because are we just making a recommendation that's that's going nowhere? If the city council already has written that they have the authority to make a list and implement it. So I I I'm missing something here.
Yeah, I believe Commissioner Tate, first of all, it's a recommendation. So it's not a condition of approval. I think with the recommendation, it's just now we're getting a sense of the commission going to the city council. It doesn't have authority on us, certainly not on them. So but I think the, and that, so that's my understanding about where we are. I don't want to put words into anybody's mouths about why they would to Commissioner Barnes or Riggs or others about.
So then basically, it's just going on record that this is what we would like to see happen.
Yes, that's what the recommendation would be. So.
Thank you.
And depending on the votes, I suppose they could pay attention to the number of votes in support and, you know, that would actually carry some weight with city council. Before we vote, can I ask clarifying question, Commissioner Barnes? Because you've raised this several times and I appreciate your points that you've made. One of the other points you've made is the delay concern. That the, you know, that I think I've heard you say in the past that one of the good things about having it connected to the project is that developers doing the project, so the amenity is built, so we have the amenity. I I wonder just how you feel about the delay issue in this regard with sort of timeliness. I'm, I guess I'm just curious, right? If it takes forever to put a list together. So then you know, the fees are are staying for a long time in some scenario. So you've I I've learned a lot from you on this. I'm just curious about how your sense of that aspect on this recommendation.
I would say let's not make it take forever. Right? The shortest way through this is to be motivated. It's the expenditure of the money. The the money goes into this community. This community is invested in dispersment of funds. You've got to theoretically, you should have a motivated community, which is motivated for community engagement, because once this, once this outreach goes through its cycles, you've got a list and you can begin the dispersment process or down that path. So all those moons should align and go more quickly, because we've been talking about this for an awful long time. This community amenities list, well before a year ago. This has been a topic for quite some time now. So yeah, figure it out and let's, let's go.
Okay. Commissioner Doe, I saw your hand or not at this time? Go ahead.
Yes, but before we vote, because it sounds like we might be doing that soon, I wanted to first say I really appreciate Commissioner Barnes bringing up this community amenity issue and I'm trying to follow the discussion and learning a lot from it. And I just want to also say it's one, I'm trying to understand what it is that I'm casting my vote for ultimately. And again, I've no, I appreciate all that Mr. Tarleton and his team have done with design, sustainability, open space and commitment to Menlo Park's future. My only opposition to the project is, as Chair DeCarty, you pointed out earlier, is the parking, we had extensive discussion in May, but it still remains that there's 588 spots for 650 employees. And so I just want to understand that if that's my only opposition is is issue of parking encompassed in the use permit and architectural control.
So on your second question, the answer is yes, the issue of parking is usual, is included. So it would be as the the motion, the part of the motion made by Commissioner Barnes is seconded by Commissioner Riggs is for approval of use permit and architectural control as presented by staff in the staff report. by Commissioner Barnes is seconded by Commissioner Riggs is for approval of use permit and architectural control as presented by staff in the staff report, which would be for that level of parking. So that's the answer to your second question. To your first question, in a second, I'm going to turn to staff and make sure that that we've got both what we're voting for in the resolution and the recommendation correct. So I'll be checking with staff and we'll make sure we know what we're voting on.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, but let me turn to you if that's, is that status, does that answer your two questions?
Yes, thank you.
Alright. So Mr. Turner, I think I am going to turn to you and say, do you know what we're voting on?
Yes, um, my understanding of the motion at the moment is recommendation of, um, approve or it's motion to approve the resolution, um, approving the architectural control and use permits. With the amendments to the conditions of approval as, uh, presented earlier. With the, um, addition, with the modification of the resolution, um, recommending that city council use the community amenities in lieu fee payments on an amenity from a list that is created through a robust community engagement process.
I see. Ms. Doherty, let me turn to you before I turn to Mr. Barnes to, um, confirm.
Thank, thank you, Chair DeCarty. I just want to, um, clarify the, uh, we would just be, um, adding a provision to the resolution that the commission is, um, uh, voting on at this time. We, we, we are not drafting an additional resolution, um, articulating the recommendation to the city council that Commissioner Barnes has, um, provided, provided us. There would be additional language and, and I would just like to clarify that Commissioner Barnes', um, motion, please include that staff will draft that modification to the resolution pursuant to the direction we received from you previously in the meeting about 20 minutes ago. Um, or if, if you intend to, um, provide us precise language, that, that's fine also.
Alright, so to clarify then to Mr. Barnes, what, what Associate Planner Turner did was summarize the intent of the language of your recommendation. And I believe what I heard Ms. Doherty say is that that's the intent that they'll do that, but they'll get the precise language after this unless you would like to.
No, that's fine. And I, I.
Language.
Not but too much of a finer point. I, I think the, um, councilor said add a provision. So provision, whatever language we're using is fine. This is a little bit of performance art because we may not get paid attention to anyhow. But yes, that is exactly my intent, um, for this. Given that we have an in lieu fee, it is what it is. So I, I appreciate the efforts to help clarify this and get this uh, written up. And I do not want to be or need to be the author any further than we've already taken it. Thank you.
Alright, so I, what I've got is Commissioner Turner summarizing what we're voting on with the intent and the recommendation per Ms. Doherty's clarification with an acceptance from the maker, which is Commissioner Barnes. So Commissioner Riggs is the seconder. Is this acceptable for you?
Yes.
Alright. So before we move to a vote, uh, any clarification? Um, any commissioner? And it would certainly be understood if there was a need of clarification at this point. So by all means, if you have a question about what you're voting on, uh, please just raise it. It's okay. Alright. Seeing none. I will, I, as, I want to echo Commissioner Doe's point. Lost this evening has been all the stuff we have not talked about because we previously have. Uh, this is a good looking project. It fits in the community. It's going to be a benefit to our community in so many ways. Uh, and I also want to note the leadership, um, that Mr. Charlton and his team, um, has had on sustainability and environmental issues for years. Um, it's why I, I like pushing hard, um, because they've done a great job and I know they keep on looking for ways to do more. Um, but I just wanted to note from my standpoint and that I'll be approving, uh, uh, referencing back to the previous discussion we had about, um, all the other aspects of the project, which, uh, as presented tonight, I think are going to be a great benefit to our community. So with that, in alphabetical order on the motion as presented, Commissioner Barnes?
Thank you to the chair. Thank you to the applicant. Thank you to the development team. Thank you to all my fellow commissioners. For your indulgence, I vote yes. Good project.
Commissioner Doe?
No.
Commissioner Doe is a no. Commissioner Harris is absent. Uh, Commissioner Riggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Tate?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Um, I will also vote yes, referencing back my frustration with the parking. Um, and with that, the project is approved five to one with one absent. So thank you very much, Mr. Charlton and your team, um, and good luck as you move forward.
Thank you all very much.
Alright, so with that, we will close. Item F two on our agenda. Uh, and that, uh, is it for public hearing, which we close. And we move to item G, which is informational items. Can I turn to Ms. Sandmyer first, Mr. Riggs, or did you have a comment? Mr. Riggs, please go ahead.
Well, it's a part of, if anything, if it's even allowed by the chair, uh, it's, it's part of the motion just made. I wondered if Ms. Doe would just share, uh, why she voted against the project.
A fine question. I'll note Commissioner Barnes' point before that commissioners can or cannot explain any aspect of their vote on this. So, um, so Commissioner Doe's prerogative.
Certainly, I can, um, try to answer that and I, I have to admit, I am maybe not quite understanding the process and a little bit flustered. I, like I said, I appreciated everything about the project. It was the parking, um, with which I disagreed. And again, I appreciate all that Mr. Charlton explained with sustainability. Um, the open space, the design of the building, commitment to Menlo Park, its future, the, the tax, it all made so much sense to me. Um, and perhaps I gave too much weight to the issue of parking and what it means for our city, um. I, I wouldn't want to get in the way of this project passing and obviously the, it, 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 the, it didn't, um. So maybe I gave too much weight to my, to the issue of, um, parking, but I don't mean any disrespect to the project and Mr. Charlton and, um, his team.
Thank you for sharing. Um, others of us have also, um, used a vote to make a statement. So understood and thank you.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Commissioner Doe. I'll just reflect in real time. I'm not sure about the practice of us asking each other about our reasoning, um, for votes in that mix. So I'll, I'll noodle on that. Um, somehow it seems like we need to do it across the board or, or not in some kind of way, but I'll, I'll, I'll think about it as well or we all can. I appreciate the intent to the ask, um, Commissioner Riggs. Um, alright, so, uh, we are on, um, informational items with Sandmyer.
Yes, good evening again. Um, so our next meeting is in one week, uh, September 19th, and we just have one item and that's the master sign program for Stanford's 500 ECR, uh, ECR project, um. And then our next regular meeting will be October 3rd. And we don't have the, um, we don't have all the items, uh, figured out for that one. So and that concludes my updates, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Barnes?
Kind of a scheduling question. Could, could we not have rolled the Stanford item into a, another agenda? What? I hate to show up for one, one, one item. I'm just curious how that came about.
Yeah, it's sometimes kind of tricky, um, trying to balance where items go with when, when they're ready to go to a hearing, um, or not ready to go to a hearing. So these are all, um, regular meetings. So I'm not sure if that helps, but that's certainly something for us to consider to, um, do our best not to have meetings with just when I am.
Thanks for your work. I appreciate it.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yeah, so first of all, I just wanted to inform everyone that, um, an opportunity came, um, on my, my wife in my radar and we will be leaving Menlo Park. So this is my last meeting on the, the planning commission and I just wanted to say thank you to everyone. I've been so impressed with all the thoughtful and informed discussions and reasoning and decision-making of, of this commission. And I wish you all good luck moving forward.
Oh, thank you, Commissioner Thomas. I'll use my prerogative as chair to thank you for your service previously and also on this commission and open your new residence. You'll continue to do the same in your community. So I wish you and your family all the best. Um, Ms. Sandmyer, I had one follow-up question, which was regarding the comment or, um, the update on uh, clarification about the relationship between ADUs and the heritage trees. Uh, and, um, I, I believe the pathway was either going to be an information session or a memo from the, I guess the city attorney. I just wondered where, where we were on that process.
Yeah, I think the, um, plan is the next time there's a project, um, where that issue comes up, we'll have the city attorney or so, another attorney, um, from her office attend to answer questions. Uh, it's a pretty complicated subject. So I think hopefully that'll be helpful, um, for commissioners to be able to ask their questions and and get everything clarified.
So that would end up happening in real time at a commission meeting when there's a project in front of us?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I, I know you all are juggling a lot. I, I, I find that personally difficult to be able to prepare for a meeting and then get that additional information in real time and then to figure out how to participate. So I was hopeful that we would have an opportunity to get something absent a particular project where it can be, um, heightened with, with folks about their concerns on a specific project. Um, but I understand you all are juggling a lot in this mix. So, so thank you for the update. Any other questions at this time from commissioners? Alright, well, thank you for the time this evening. Have a great rest of your week. We will see you, uh, in a week, um, and have a good night. And thank you to the staff, especially Mr. Turner for all your work this evening.
Night.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.